Good evening and welcome to the Coon Rapids City Council Meeting for Tuesday, November 17, 2020. If you could please rise and join us for the pledge.
The pledge leads to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Gruscoviek.
Here.
Councilmember Kicker.
Here.
Councilmember Demmer.
Here.
Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. First item on our agenda then is to adopt this evening's agenda.
So moved.
Second motion by Demmer, second by Johnson. I knew that. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and the agenda is adopted. And we have two items under proclamations and presentations this evening. And the first one is to declare Small Business Saturday. And... Sorry, I just realized I didn't have my iPad on yet. Um, there we go. Okay. Uh, small business, small businesses employ... Is all this information in the... Yeah, I'm gonna just read this, aren't I? Okay. All right. Whereas, the government of Coon Rapids, Minnesota celebrates our local businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 30.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of all firms with paid employees in the United States, are responsible for 64.9% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2018, and whereas, small businesses employ 47.3% of the employees in the private sector in the United States. 62% of the United States small businesses reported they need to see consumer spending return to pre-COVID levels by the end of 2020 in order to stay in business. 65% of United States small business owners said it would be most helpful to their business to have their regulars return and start making purchases again. And 3/4 of U.S. consumers are currently looking for ways to shop small and support their community. And whereas, 96% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that shopping at small, independently owned businesses supports their commitment to making purchases that have a positive social, economic, and environmental impact. And 97% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday agree that small businesses are essential to their community. And whereas, 95% of consumers who shopped on Small Business Saturday reported the day makes them want to shop or eat at small, independently owned businesses all year long, not just during the holiday season. And whereas, Coon Rapids, Minnesota supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas, advocacy groups as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the City Council and citizens of our city, officially proclaim November 28, 2020 as Small Business Saturday in the City of Coon Rapids, and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year proclaimed the 17th day of November, 2020. Yeah, very, very noble, uh, nice aspiration there. Um, I've noticed on Facebook quite a few of our small businesses have already started their Black Friday specials leading up to this. So, uh, yeah, I encourage everybody to get out there and support small businesses. Small Business Saturday and every day. I noticed we didn't have a proclamation for... Whoops, wrong, wrong one. Small Brewery Sunday. Alloy has declared... Small, small independent brewers have become the backbone of America. Alloy is, they're celebrating Small Brewery Sunday on November 29th. So, no proclamation to go with that, just thought I would share that.
That's an informal proclamation.
Informal proclamation, there you go. Okay, so we have done that. And now we have a couple guests here. Um, we are looking to... I actually had to look at the word retrospectively because I wasn't sure that that was the right word, but we are looking to retrospectively proclaim November 9th through 13th as DECA Week in the City of Coon Rapids. DECA is an association of marketing students, and again, all this is gonna be in here, I'm just gonna read the proclamation. Um, and maybe while I'm reading this, maybe our two special DECA guests, Jordana and Sydney, could come up to the podium there so you can tell us a little bit about what you're doing afterwards. Um, I mean, after I read the proclamation, what you're doing in general as DECA. Whereas, DECA is an association of marketing students which prepare the students to be academically prepared, community oriented, professionally responsible, and experienced leaders. And whereas, the mission of DECA is to prepare emerging leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. And whereas, DECA's guiding principles are designed to explain how DECA fulfills their mission. And whereas, DECA enhances the co-curricular education of members through a comprehensive program that integrates into classroom instruction, applies learning, connects to business, and promotes competition. And whereas, DECA's activities assist in the development of academically prepared, community oriented, professionally responsible, experienced leaders. And whereas, DECA's attributes and values describe the organization's priorities and standards, including competence, innovation, integrity, and teamwork. And now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, officially proclaim November 9th through 13th, 2020 as DECA Week in the City of Coon Rapids. Proclaim this 17th day of November, 2020. And welcome, and maybe you can introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourselves and what the significance of DECA is.
Hi, I'm Sydney.
And I'm Jordana. And DECA, November is DECA Month, and like, last week it was DECA Week, and the whole purpose is to like, spread awareness about what we're doing in DECA. Like, for example, we have been posting things on social media about our food drive that we're holding throughout November. And we also have been posting like, facts about DECA so people can learn more about what DECA is.
And then, also, this, uh, last week was our power conference, so we got to compete in a conference that we don't usually get to compete in. And we competed virtually this year due to COVID, and we just got to... I think it was like, a good opportunity to like, restart our competition skills this season. And it was just a different opportunity that I think was nice this year.
Excellent. So, the, the food drive that you're conducting, um, if anybody would like to participate in that, where would they bring their food?
Um, we have, um, on our social medias, including our, um, DECA, like Instagram, we have links and we're posting things on there about how you can, um, donate to that. So what we're doing is, we're offering a, um, a COVID-friendly way to donate, so you can leave your items on your doorstep and we'll come pick them up. And, uh, we'll take care of them from there. And then we're also partnering, partnering with some local businesses where we're leaving boxes, um, in their business where they can, where people can bring in different foods if that's a better option for them.
For instance, do you, can you think of a couple of the businesses off the top of your head? I'm just imagining the ones like me that doesn't have Instagram.
Yeah. Um, I don't have any off the top of my head, but we partnered with the Chamber of Commerce a couple weeks ago, and they, uh, a couple people stepped forward, and, uh, the person who is leading our food drive is not here today, so she would be the one who would know the business is.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
No worries.
Thank you. All right. Anything else you'd like to add?
I don't think so.
All right. Um, Ms. Lenzmeyer, one of their assignments is to bring back a picture. Maybe you could use their phone or your phone or something and...
Put it on Instagram.
Put it on Instagram where I'll never see it, sure.
Yeah, I'll hold you right here. I'll look you up.
One of them center here. Proclamation, all just kinda hang onto it while you're looking at it, and then we'll look at it. There we go.
There you go.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you, thanks for coming in. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's responsible, it was smiling.
Yeah.
Smiles.
Smiling eyes, that was.
Yeah, just... All right. We are up to item three on our agenda to approve the minutes from the November 4th meeting.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Demmer, second by Wells, I think it was. Any discussion or corrections?
Was I actually absent?
You were.
No, you were.
It's in the, uh, minutes as absent, and I did not remember being absent.
Sorry.
I've got, I've got members absent, none. You're looking at the next, you're looking at the minute, the minutes from the 13th, I'll bet.
Oh, sorry. Yep, I clicked the wrong one. Well, that's, yeah, okay.
Good, never mind.
All right. Rosanna, Rosanna-danna there?
So, so many minutes.
All right. All right. Um, any discussion or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and those minutes are approved. And now we're looking to approve the minutes from the November 13th meeting.
Still moved.
Second. Motion by Johnson, second by Wells.
This was the canvas meeting.
Yes, this was just the meeting to canvass the election. Any corrections or, uh, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
Abstain.
And that motion carries two abstentions, Councilmembers Demmer and Kicker. And now we are up to our consent agenda, and we have four items on our consent agenda. The first one is to, um, uh, let's see here. Oh, just to acknowledge the receipt of the financial information, the quarterly financial information as of September 30th, 2020. The financial summer of, summary of all funds for the third quarter, and the quarterly enterprise fund statements are herein attached. Um, so, we're just looking to receive this report, acknowledge the receipt of this report. Item six, which is the second item on our consent agenda, is to approve the 2021 SCORE Recycling Agreement with Anoka County. Uh, we're considering the 2021 SCORE Recycling Agreement between Coon Rapids and Anoka County, which funds the city's residential solid waste recycling program. The term of this agreement is from January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. The funds within this agreement are used to meet the 2021 recycling goal of 6,583 tons as set by Anoka County. Coon Rapids is entitled to receive reimbursement for eligible activities up to $219,132, and this amount includes $199,132, um, which is the total population and household allotment for the recycling program, and $20,000 dedicated for facility improvements. The 2021 recycling budget will be approved by the city and county before, before year's end, and the SCORE funds will be available to the city, uh, January 1st. So we're looking that, uh, we're looking to approve the 2021 SCORE grant from Anoka County and authorize staff to execute the 2021 agreement for the residential recycling program. Item seven this evening is the third item on our consent agenda, and that's to approve final payment to park construction for Project 19-2 Street Reconstruction. This project included the reconstruction of Foley Boulevard between Northdale Boulevard and Main Street, Wedgewood Drive between Round Lake Boulevard and Main Street, and Olive Street between 121st Avenue and Main Street. And we're looking to approve final payment to park construction in the amount of $249,896.33 for Project 19-2 Street Reconstruction. Item eight, uh, which is the fourth and final item on our consent agenda this evening, is to approve final payment to Municipal Builders Incorporated for Project 20-7, 2020 Well Rehabilitation Project. Uh, so we're looking to approve change order and final payment to Municipal Builders Incorporated in the amount of $21,013.91 for Project 2-7, actually, it's 20-7, 2020 Well Rehabilitation Project, right? Is it 2-7 or is it 20-7? Whichever. 20-7, okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Geisler.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Gruscoviek.
I would just like to point out on that quarterly financial report, first of all, I, I really think that's a great report. It's clear, it's, it's done well, so thanks to the finance team for putting that together. And one thing I noticed down toward the bottom of that report is the, I just think that our golf operations and that restaurant operations did a really good job, uh, managing the drop in revenue and, uh, the corresponding, uh, drop in expenses because, you know, a huge drop in revenue, but really, the bottom line really wasn't affected that much, so just wanted to point out a great job there. And then, on the Project 27, the Well Rehabilitation Project, just a quick question for Mr. Hammer. I know we always plan for the worst on this, and it did come in substantially under because of that, but just, uh, a quick question, you know, how did, how did that do? How did we do? Was there anything unexpected in those well rehabilitations or anything we gotta look to, uh, in 2021?
Uh, Councilmember Gruscoviek, thank you for asking. Um, our total budget on it was 400. We increased it because we did a booster pump, and so while our original bids were close to that 400,000, we were able to keep it, um, under, including the consulting work that we have. So, uh, we're, we're probably 50,000, 60,000 under budget in total, and, uh, we've got a new program that we do every year, so it's not gonna include anything that was on here, but we're adding boosters to that. So I think we got another 400 planned for 2021.
Thank you. Mr. Stemwaddle, was there something you wanted to add? Looked like you're getting...
Mayor Council, I was just gonna comment about the quarterly financial, certainly was one of the more interesting quarterly financial reports that we've probably ever had. Between the combination of adjustments to expenditures and revenues for business items related to the pandemic, COVID-19, um, what have you, also the CARES Act played a huge impact, and so even to the extent to the golf course, some of that was offset by CARES Act dollars because we could reimburse for certain restaurant and golf operation expenses related to cleaning, sanitizing, uh, preparing, all those different things that we had to do there, which helped pretty tremendously. Um, and the golf course itself, uh, standalone from the restaurant, had a really good rebound from, uh, what we were expecting to be a pretty poor financial condition this summer, but it turns out people wanted to golf in droves this spring and summer and all the way through just recently here. We closed a course down about a week ago prior to the last snow. Um, and so, Mr. Anderson was very happy with how strongly we finished, and, uh, but for that, we'd be in much worse shape, I think, in 2020 there, yeah.
All right, thank you. Um, any other discussion or questions? We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. Um, will we, before the end of the year, have anything on our agenda for Mr. Anderson? We kinda miss his smiling face at meetings.
Mayor Council, if you would like, we could, uh, we could have him pop on for a meeting just to, to see him here. Um, I'm sure, since he did have such a great finish to the year, he'd be happy to share with you what that looked like, so we'll find him.
Thank you, man. All right. Item nine, uh, excuse me, item nine on our agenda this evening is to consider adopting Ordinance 2239 Restricting Parking on 121st Avenue. Um, this is 121st Avenue west of Hanson Boulevard, and this impacts, um, phew. Okay.
Four feet.
Yeah, yeah, but I wanted to get to that. No, it's 75 feet east and west of the city street intersections, um, and will hopefully alleviate potential safety issues. Um, so it'll be from the intersections of 121st Avenue and 121st Lane, Kildare Street, Ibis Street, and Hummingbird Street. 75 feet each way to those intersections. And, um, assuming that we move forward with this this evening, um, it looks like we're looking to put the signs up by, no. Oh, that was for comment, November 6th, never mind. Um, anything you wanna cover on this? I got a call from Bernice Olson, she was very happy. All right. It's not gonna go anywhere.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Gruscoviek. Councilmember Gruscoviek.
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2239 Restricting Parking on the north side of 121st Avenue at a distance of 75 feet east and west of 121st Lane, Kildare Street, Ibis Street, Ibis Street, and Hummingbird Street intersections. Second.
Motion by Gruscoviek, second by Kicker. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Gruscoviek.
This one's in Ward 1. I've been hearing about these intersections and the potential safety issues on this for all four years on my council. I'm just glad that the, the council and the staff came together and are, were getting this thing done. Uh, I heard from a lot of residents, I mean, in the 20s on this one. I noticed that when we put our, our, uh, survey out, that 29 or so responses, uh, 28 positive on this, so overwhelming support from the neighborhoods. And, uh, again, just definitely glad this is getting done. I'm gonna support this. I think we've actually dodged a bullet on this, that there haven't been any occurrences or, you know, bad accidents yet, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this? Your Honor, Councilmember Wells?
I'd just like to point out, I'm glad the election came before you said Ibis.
I corrected myself right away. I'm reading.
It's next to Z on.
He'll be missed.
Yeah, right. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries. And we are on to item 10, which is a similar, um, adopting Ordinance 2240 Restricting Parking on Woodcrest Drive. And this would be restricting parking on the west side of Woodcrest Drive from Egrit Boulevard to a distance of 1/3 of a mile south. So not to interfere with parking by the sliding hill, um, but prior to that.
Yeah, basically goes from Egrit for 1/3 of a mile back on, on Woodcrest.
Yep. That, and that was really interesting to include that 1987, um, information on when they made the other side no parking, um, and, and to try and keep people from walking across Woodcrest Drive to get to the sliding hill and the park.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I will say, I didn't expect to get any calls on this. I thought it was a pretty non-controversial one. I did get one call, and it was 100% in support of the parking restriction. And so, um, I will, uh, make a motion to adopt ordinance, I believe it's 2240 Restricting Parking on the west side of Woodcrest Drive from Egrit Boulevard to a distance of 1/3 of a mile south.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Geisler. Discussion?
Aye, Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
So it's always hard to tell how accurate these dots are, but it looks like they go just past the trail entry, um, for people walking to the park. I, I guess the more I thought about it, the more I was surprised that we wouldn't have come just short of that entry for people parking to go to the park, since that, that park doesn't have a parking lot, really. Um, was that intentional to go a little bit past the entry, or is that just sort of a, an artifact of the drawing?
Councilmember Demmer, counsel. Excuse me. Um, there was two reasons. It's coming out of that S curve, so you're getting onto the straightaway, and then it also lines up with the access point across the street to the car dealership, which is where most of the issues were occurring.
Yep. And in the phone call that I, I got, it was interesting because it was, um, expressing a concern about the offloading of vehicles there, and, and he wanted to make sure that, that we made it sufficiently far enough around that curve, um, so that, that was, uh, that was taken care of. He didn't want us to stop short on the curb. So, I mean, when I looked back at the, the map and was talking to him about it, um, it seemed to line up perfectly with what, um, was being observed in the neighborhood.
Yeah, it, it makes sense. It was just more of a, if it had been 50 feet shorter, then people could park right there and get on the trail, and so it, just sort of, as you sign it, you might wanna think about where you want that last sign to be. Um, you know, I, I think about someone with a, a wheelchair access trying to get to that park or something like that. There's really nowhere to park.
See, and I look at it and think that it should be just a little bit further to get past that, that Ingress-Negress from the car dealership.
It's a, it's a difficult one because that is, I mean, not the world's greatest park, but it's kind of a fun park, you know, so.
Well, we got a, got a 1/3 of a mile wherever that ends up there.
Yep.
All right. Um, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and that motion carries.
Good, you helped me keep my word. I told him it was probably gonna be unanimous.
I had the same conversation.
Hedging my bets.
Item 11 is to consider adoption of Ordinance 2241, which is an ordinance amending City Code, Chapter 5-900 Tobacco. Um, and this is to get us to conform to the change in state and federal law that requires those purchasing and using tobacco to be 21 years of age. Um, and so the, uh, attached ordinance outlines the proposed changes to bring the code into compliance with the 21 years of age requirement, and an update on administrative penalties due to a change in state law. And then during the revision, staff did use the recommendations from the League of Minnesota Cities Model Tobacco Ordinance. Anything you wanna cover on that, Ms. Lenzmeyer?
Nothing further to add, Mr. Mayor.
Well, you did good then.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
Just a question. Um, when I clicked on the link for the summary of ordinance, uh, there's really nothing there. It says, "City does ordain," and then it just says, "A full copy is available," so I couldn't tell if this was the wrong attachment, or if we just weren't gonna bother summarizing it. And then I, it says to publish the summary, and so I wanna make sure...
If you, if you downloaded the, if you downloaded the whole packet, the summary followed the ordinance.
Okay.
And it's just a, it's just a small thing. Uh, the City of Coon Rapids does ordain a full copy is available for review online.
That was my question. Is that really what we meant? Because normally when you do a summary, you say, this, like, it doesn't just say there's a full version somewhere. It would say, "This changed it from 18 to 21, there's a full version on the website."
Oh, I assumed it was a summary of the dates.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Demmer, we summarized it in the heading because it's nearly every section. So, we can add a little, another sentence or two if that makes you more comfortable, but...
I just couldn't, I couldn't tell if it was...
Like, I missed something. It does look a little different.
Yeah, it was more of a, would we like to summarize it to say what the purpose was? This bumps the age from 18 to 21, in compliance, blah, blah, blah.
We'll take care of that before we send it in tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
I like that, though. If it makes you feel better.
If it works better for all of us.
Just a great example of the word summary can mean so many things.
Thank you.
All right.
Well, in that case...
Um, did you wanna make a motion then, Councilmember Demmer?
I will. Um, I move to adopt Ordinance 2241, an ordinance amending Chapter 5-900 Tobacco, and authorize summary publication.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Gruscoviek?
I know the majority of this is changing the age, the ages from 18 years of age to 21 years of age. Is, uh, the minimum clerk age stays the same at, must be 18. Is that correct? That doesn't change per the state code?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Gruscoviek, 18 is the age that we are outlining now. There was a question on that, and we made that recommendation based on the model ordinance from the League.
So we may have to...
It's always been a question, most groups will, most store owners do require them to be 18 to do it anyway, so every once in a while, somebody will call and ask if someone younger than 18 can sell... sell tobacco, and we're recommending we go with eighteen.
Mr. Brody, were you thinking about something there?
No, Your Honor, I think Joan summarized it correctly. I mean, we've got options, we could make it twenty-one, we could make it thirty. I think we're following the model and.
What we're basi, what we're basically saying here is, we don't want juveniles selling tobacco.
Right.
I mean, that's so.
Right.
And, and I think that's a legitimate restriction.
Yeah. All right. I'm fine with that.
I mean, the question was, should it be twenty-one to match the other age?
Pretty much. But, but I see that, you know, eighteen is sufficient, if that's what works.
Okay. Any other discussion? Have we, have we voted on this?
Nope.
Okay. I've, I've wrote down that we had. Sorry. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Item twelve is to consider minutes from the October twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, Coon Rapids Home Improvement Foundation meeting and recommendation for the two thousand twenty-one Front Door Program. Mr. Grand, as long as you are here, did you want to, did you want to talk about this one? Or were you here just for questions?
Well, of course, I was here primarily if you guys had questions, but I can certainly just kind of summarize. You know, there's, as, obviously if you, you know, when you read the memo, you would have seen there's going to be a lot of changes coming forward through the Home Improvement Foundation. There were some new accounting standards that our auditor then looked through the, the city records and kind of looked at the structure of the foundation. And it does appear that because of these new accounting standards, the foundation will no longer be able to exist in it, in its existing form. So we've had some, you know, meetings internally, we've had some, the meeting in October with the, the full board to discuss that. There was a lot of emotions, because this board has existed for such a long time, since the late seventies, I believe. And there's a lot of passion for home improvement in the city through that board and the members that are, that are on that board. So there will be more information that will be coming to the council in the next couple of months as we work to dissolve the foundation. But we're certainly interested, or the, the board is interested in continuing their efforts to be some sort of an advisory committee or something, we haven't determined that yet, to the council, to continue working and offering these great programs to the homeowners of, or residents of Coon Rapids. And then in the memo, I did summarize the, you know, a lot of the, the outcomes, the, of the, the programs, you know, the, the hundreds of home improvement loans that have resulted through low-interest loans, deferred loans, down payment assistance, the program, the Home for Generations program for large interior remodeling that has then resulted in the home remodeling tour that we do each year to promote programs and to promote Coon Rapids and, and buying in Coon Rapids. Also, the more recently created Front Door Program that has been wildly popular for exterior improvements and curb appeal. You know, so there's a lot of good that comes through this foundation, the, the dollars and the board that works to make it happen. So again, the October meeting was the start of that discussion. You'll be get, getting more information coming up the next couple of months. In the meantime, as part of their board, in October, they did make a motion to approve three hundred thousand dollars towards the two thousand twenty-one Front Door Grant Program to continue that program, because we, at least last year, the way we did it was, applications were available starting in January, so it's coming up quick. So we just wanted to make sure that we would start that ball rolling, if in fact, obviously, that we have your support.
Mr. Grand, what was our allocation in two thousand twenty for the Front Door Program? Do you remember?
The two thousand twenty program was, we had a little bit of money left over from the, our two thousand nineteen program, since that was the, the first year, and we kind of were working our way through it. So we did have some money left over from the two thousand nineteen, and then the new money that was added in two thousand twenty, I think there was a total budget of, I want to say it was like, right around two hundred thousand.
Okay.
Maybe like two-ten. But what the board has done in the past has been, they have decided on a number of recipients, not on a specific, specific dollar amount that will be allocated. Of course, they do allocate the funds to support that, but they've always kind of just come up with a number of recipients, and then we go from there. So there's, we've always had, for the two years that the program has existed, we've always had enough money to fund all of those applicants, and then any unspent money has then rolled over to the next year.
Excellent, thank you. Anybody have any questions of Mr. Grand?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Kicker?
I make a motion that the city council accept the minutes and concur with the recommendation of the Coon Rapids Home Improvement Foundation Board of Directors to allocate three hundred thousand to the Front Door Grant Program from Fund nineteen thousand.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Geisler. Discussion?
Your Honor.
Councilmember Demmer?
So, you know, whenever I walk around the neighborhood and I see all the signs up and, and just what really neat things the, these programs have done for the various neighbors, you know, I, I know that finding out that they have to dissolve as a, a foundation is, is probably hard for the members who put that together, so I just wanted to make sure they knew how much all that effort was appreciated and how, you know. I, I like the idea of, even if it can't officially be a foundation, that we find a way to keep using that volunteering to help the city come up with these sort of things, because it's, it's really been a great program, and, and so, you know, thanks to all the people on the board.
And, and that was absolutely key, was to make sure that they knew how much we appreciated everything they're doing, and that we want to keep it going, but we, but it needed to look different. It just, it needed to function differently.
And then one other question, since, you know, if we do this allocation, which we're moving towards doing, should people watching at home want to participate? How do they participate for next year?
So there will be an article in the January City Newsletter. Last year was on the front page, I can't guarantee it's not going to be on the front page again, but it'll, as of the first week of January, when the winter newsletter does come out to residents, the online applications will be available to be filled out. So you just go online, you fill them out, you submit it. There will be a deadline, it'll be somewhere around March first, that deadline hasn't been determined yet. And then a lottery will be held, because as was the case in the past two years, we've received far more applications than what we have money for. So an applica, or a lottery will be held to identify the recipient winners that will then work through the program to get a grant to do curb appeal and improvements on the outside of their homes.
Very good. Any other discussion or questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Gruskovjak?
So according to the minutes, I mean, it, it doesn't look like the board is dissolved yet. Is that correct?
Correct.
So that, that will dissolve, and then, of course, we'd all like to see this continue, so it would have to be, will we have a discussion then on how that works? If it becomes a, a commission, and, and if it does become a commission, does that amend our city charter and all that? So, Mr. Stenwettel.
Mayor and counsel, yes, so at their, we're anticipating at their December annual meeting that the board would at least start the process to dissolve the foundation. There's some work that goes into it, some timelines that need to be met from legal standard. I was anticipating at the December work session that council could have a conversation about what they would like to do going forward, at least start that conversation. There are a couple of options. The first one would be to create a commission by ordinance, where the council would sort of set the structure of the commission, the number of members, how the terms would work for those members, things like that, and what the appointment process would look like. You could do other alternatives, such as establish an ongoing committee. The foundation recommended and felt strongly about the idea of a commission, just because they felt like it was a more formal sort of representation of what they were hoping to continue, but certainly that would be council's discretion.
Very good. And then just to add, I mean, that Front Door Program, fully support this allocation for that Front Door Program again. Talking to a lot of neighbors, it was amazing how many of my neighbors and folks in Coon Rapids are taking advantage of that, and the impact that it's having on our neighborhoods, it's just fantastic. Great, a great job altogether on that.
All right. Any other, Councilmember Wells?
As the newest member of the foundation, I don't have decades, you know, in it like some people do, and they are very passionate about it. And I think the important thing in this council, I think, has reinforced that, is that the money be used as, as it's always been intended. Obviously, future councils can siphon money off for other things, and, and I think that's what they're most passionate about. I personally would, would not care if, if we were a commission, but as the city manager said, most of the group feels like a commission has more status than an advisory group, and to me, it's, you know, potato, patato. But, but the important thing is that the money is used for what it's intended and doesn't get siphoned off to other things in the future. And I think, you know, it sounds like council is in total agreement with that, so that's the important thing.
Ibis, Ibis.
It's potato. It's potato. That's never been in dispute. Nor has this commission.
All right. Any other discussion on this? We have a motion and a second, I believe. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. We are on to item thirteen, which is to consider roadway maintenance agreement ninety-eight thirty-eight to ninety-eight fifty East River Road, Port River Walk. And, there we go. So, public infrastructure work for Centra Homes Port River Walk redevelopment project has been underway for several months. A new cul-de-sac has been constructed at the east end of one hundredth Avenue, formerly called East River Road, in place of a slip ramp that previously provided access to the Anoka County-maintained portion of East River Road. A public roadway that extends up a hill to two existing apartment buildings at ninety-eight thirty-eight and ninety-eight fifty East River Road, and these addresses are actually in the process of being changed to one hundredth Avenue, has also been reconstructed. Because existing space constraints at the top of the hill make it difficult to turn around a city snowplow at the end of the access road, the owner of the two properties has agreed to handle snow removal on this roadway. The roadway will also include a striped walkway on the south side. Space constraints prevent construction of a separate concrete sidewalk that will connect the new public sidewalks within the Centra Homes development to the existing sidewalk to the south along East River Road. While vacating the roadway may have been an ideal option, complex title matters would make it extremely difficult. Therefore, the access road will still be considered a public roadway and will be treated as such for purposes of future reconstruction. So that, that, I, I had four questions on this, and that sort of answered the first one, which was why we don't have a sidewalk connection there, because it seems odd that our two new sidewalks would dump into an asphalt cul-de-sac and then go about two-hundred-and-fifty feet, and then get back onto a concrete sidewalk again. It just seemed like maybe we missed something there, but, and I apologize if that's what happened. So I don't, I don't think we have an answer to that, because I think that's what we have to do now, right? There's no way of putting a sidewalk in?
Mayor, council.
Mr. Hammer?
Mr. Mayor, council, yes, we've got grade issues on the East River roadside, so absent building, a large retaining wall and maintaining that. We would have to go to the opposite side of the road, and then you would have had to cross the cul-de-sac anyway to get there, and mature trees, private development, private utilities, we would have had to secure more right-of-way to make that happen. So the, the space constraints just got too narrow without purchasing land or going onto private property to make that work. This was the best option we felt we could come up with. I know it's not ideal at the end of that cul-de-sac, but because there's really no traffic down at the end of that, and we're going to continue to maintain that connection, I think we'll be okay to have the pedestrian way down through there. As a matter of fact, I think people in those apartments are the ones that are probably going to use it the most. Certainly those going from the neighborhood trying to go down East River Road will certainly benefit from that as well. But we, we will continue to maintain that, that throughway for the, for the sidewalk, and also there's no parking on either side of that drive, so it should be clear pavement width.
Okay. So that eliminated one of my other questions. And then one of the other ones was, if we need to have an on-street sidewalk, which apparently we do, should we do more than just add a stripe? I mean, I'm just wondering, because when you come out from the cul-de-sac on those, all of a sudden now you're on a street, it seems like it should be kind of defined. Is, is that stripe just enough, or is there a way to actually indicate a sidewalk more with different striping or something?
Mr. Mayor, we could certainly look at coloring it, something different. I mean, when we do sidewalks right on the back of curb, for example, we usually put a stripe on the edge to try to demarc where the edge is, but it would be difficult to do. I don't think we delineators, and we talked about the sheroes on Mississippi several years ago. All of that you're going to have to maintain, and you're going to have to keep putting out there time after time. We could look at signage potentially, but it would be very difficult absent, you know, hatching it or striping it a different color, and I've seen that done before, you painted green or something different, but then again, you're maintaining that.
It'll probably be the same people using it anyway, so it won't be that big a deal, they'll figure it out. And then the other question was, this is a maintenance agreement, and, and I know that it's supposed to be for the snow plowing, but it also mentions like the, like patching and stuff, right?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, so just the routine maintenance of the driveway itself would be the responsibility of the association, just like it's, or the apartments, just like it's a private driveway. We would handle any concerns that existed on that portion, that's the sidewalk. When it's due for reconstruction in the future, we would do that as a public road and assess the benefiting property owner.
Okay. I would, I was just thinking back to the private streets we've got up near Riverdale, where they just got so bad with potholes, but there wasn't anything we could do, because they were private streets. Now this one, we were setting up a pri, a private maintenance agreement, and I was just hoping that we would still be able to go in there and do the necessary patching if it comes to it, because the sidewalk will be important.
Yes, the sidewalk will maintain to be ours, and if it ever gets in a state of disrepair, we can always move forward with the four-twenty-nine process and assess the benefiting property.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you. Councilmember Demmer, and then Councilmember Johnson.
I'll say this one confused me, because I thought it was sort of a, we're going to agree to let them shovel the snow, but then as I read through the agreement, it was also, and if we ever fix the road, you get assessed one hundred percent. Is that right? We're, we're not tripping in anything for future assessments?
That's correct. I mean, we're basically treating it as a private road. And, and part of that was, we reconstructed it today at no cost to them.
Okay.
And we redid their mailboxes, and we added some lighting, so that there was some initial costs that we're absorbing for them to take that on for the future.
And that, so the part we're talking about here is just that section from the cul-de-sac onward, and that is to serve those two buildings for, I mean, I, I guess I lost track of, I thought that whole area was going to be River Walk. Those two buildings are there, and they're going to keep that road, and, and they're a separate association versus the Centra Homes Association?
Correct. It's just the existing development, existing apartment buildings that weren't part of the development.
And those other roads that go through Centra are public?
All public, so.
So we don't have a situation where one private road's going through another private road?
Correct. All the way to the cul-de-sac bubble is all public, and then once you leave that cul-de-sac bubble, it's being treated as a private driveway entering the apartment complex.
Okay. I think I get it now. I was just really shocked when I saw the hundred percent assessment on a public road, and I thought, you know, but I, I think I understand why.
Private, private driveway with a public sidewalk.
Basically a private driveway.
And it doesn't include curb and gutter, there are amenities that don't exist on this, because again, there was no room to fit them.
A driveway with a stripe on it that I can walk on.
Yep. Councilmember Johnson?
Well, and that's, that's kind of getting to my point on this, and I mean, we're going through a lot of kind of rigmarole to basically kind of call a private driveway a public road, or a public road a private driveway. And my question is, is why don't we fix it and then basically give it to them?
Councilmember Johnson?
I mean, I'm not, there are ways that we can do this in, you know, whether we abandon it, or we negotiate a de minimis sale, or whatever, but, but why don't we do that rather than have a agreement like this in perpetuity?
I'll just point out one point, and that is, it is fixed, it is reconstructed, it's brand-new as part of this development. With regard to the title issues and transferring, I'll defer to Mr. Brody. With regard to the title issues and transferring, I'll defer to Mr. Brody.
Your Honor, Councilmember Johnson, that was our ideal solution is to vacate that. It's a right of way, we don't own, the issue is we don't own the underlying fee.
Right.
So if we vacate it, it goes to whoever essentially gave that property or dedicated that property and it's so convoluted down there and that's certainly something we could explore in the future, I guess, because I think all parties were interested in that. But, you know, as you see when we vacate this street coming up in a couple of weeks on Zilla, back in the project, when we've spent, also an outside council spent years trying to straighten out the title work and it just simply was unknown. It's also Anoka County right of way down there. There were too many unknowns if we vacated. It wasn't as simple as just-
Okay.
Piece of property that we owned, yeah, we could sell it to them, but it was more complicated with the vacation and we didn't know what was going to go. It could go to somebody else, it could go to the Anoka County. And so rather than do that, we came up with what seems like a sort of convoluted solution.
I don't want to make it more complicated than it needs to be, but I mean, could it in theory be, and I don't know if you're still doing any of this with any of the property there, but could it be attached to a quiet title action or something like that?
Again, it's, it's a public right of way and the only way we can get rid of that is by vacating it. And that's where the, we don't, we didn't have, it wasn't clear on any sort of, even in digging in a little bit of who would-
Sure.
Eventually get that property with, and so whether it would be the adjoining property owner or more likely the county, it was, it wasn't super clear in that respect.
So if I could just kind of cut to the chase on it, what you're trying to do by this agreement is to effectively accomplish that but avoid unintended consequences.
You got it.
All right.
And just to be clear, it is going to still be a public right of way. We've just kind of come up with a agreement that benefits them as well. They'll be able to plow it out sooner than we would be able to do it. So there's plenty of benefit. We constructed it without cost to them on the initial go around, so there was a mutually beneficial deal. I thought we came with Mr. Hammer and Mr. Brown and, and the city engineer, the best solution we could come up with for kind of a difficult proposition.
I get it. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Councilmember Demmer?
I think it's important to remember the hidden benefit of, we don't end up with a section that doesn't have any sidewalk that disconnects our side, you know, I know that this is a little weird because you still got to go through the cul-de-sac, but this gives you a sidewalk quite, that goes quite a ways. And every once in a while I run along here and it's, you know, it's not a bad place to have sidewalk access, so I, well, vacation might seem like the best way to do it, there actually is a benefit here that I think is tangible, so I, I kind of like that idea of keeping it so that it can stay not private property.
Yeah, I agree.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Gruskowiec?
I just had one question on, on this maintenance agreement. Is the maintenance agreement, it says in perpetuity, but is it connected to the, the title of the land or the ownership group? So if, if it changes ownership, do we lose that maintenance agreement or does it stand place? You're going to record it against the land, right?
Yes, and it is, paragraph eight, I apologize, I just had to quickly review to make sure that, I believe that was in there and it is, will be binding on the benefit. There's a lot of legalese, but yes, it'll be binding on future owners.
Future owners as well. Okay, thank you. All right.
Oh, I suppose you would like a motion?
Um, well, it's just to make sure, no more questions, but sure.
All right. Move to approve the agreement with Peter and Maureen Fisher related to construction and maintenance of a roadway adjacent to 9838 and 9850 East River Road.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Geisler. Discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, and that motion carries. We are at the open mic portion of the meetings. Anybody here to address council for open mic this evening? Open mic, up to three minutes. All right. I don't have any reports on previous open mics and we are up to other business.
Cricket.
Crickets, no kidding, huh? Anything going on? Everything's, everything seems to be shutting down again, so. Mr. Stammwittl, what's going on?
Mayor and council, I was going to mention that, that I guess keep your eyes open, ears open for tomorrow's updates on what sounds like will impact bars, restaurants, youth sports, et cetera. Certainly we have some facilities here that we're going to be paying close attention to, whether it be Bunker Hills, Event Center, the Ice Center, holy cow, the Ice Center or other, other places like that. There's, there's one thing you can do if you're interested. Right now, we've updated the rules and the schedule for the 2020 holiday lighting contest. You can check out our city webpage for more information on that. So if nothing else, you can get out in your car and drive to city and find out, put up some lights and make that vote and then there's prizes for first and second place. And multiple categories, I should mention, yeah.
Excellent. Yeah, and that always makes for a fun drive around, you know, around the, to look at the lights anyway.
Mr. Grant?
Councilmember Geisler?
Yeah, I just kind of wanted to, to do a final check since we're on the 17th and on the 15th, our CARES Act funds should have been able to go out and can you give a recap? Do you have any numbers of what actually went out to our businesses and nonprofits?
Yeah, Mayor and council, I don't have some of that data in front of me. We did have, oh gosh.
Because we had allocated, what, 1.3 of our 4.8 million?
Yeah, initially we had allocated up to 1.5, 1.6, although we did not spend that much. I think the total came in closer to a million dollars for the business grants and the, the nonprofit grants were much smaller than. In the end, we, we had six nonprofits apply, four of which were eligible to apply. So those, all those were, awards were mailed out last week. The period for the CARES Act closed on the 15th. We're in the stages of final reporting for the CARES Act. We were able to utilize all of our 4.8 plus million dollars. Primarily at the end, we were able to attribute a lot of the costs that had not been otherwise allocated to police and fire staffing, which was one of the eligible costs you, that cities could use the money for beginning in March all the way through November. And so we're able to use every cent of that for the city in one way or the other. Many of those improvements were related to COVID mitigation, whether it be improvements to HVAC, physical space, cleaning, things of that nature. We certainly did have the business and nonprofit grants, as I mentioned, the, the public safety dollars, and then some other minor improvements to facilities like the Event Center and others. So in the end, the money was well utilized. I never thought it'd be such a challenge to try to spend 4.8 million dollars. You know, you get this money in late summer, you're expected to spend it all by the end of, or middle of November, end up being a little more work than we anticipated and luckily things get, came together really well in the last month or so.
I've, I've heard from a few of the local businesses and they're all very excited to get, get the checks and it makes a big difference. Especially now we're hearing things have to tighten up and then, you know, from my perspective, you know, from how do we help the businesses? The businesses, it's not necessarily about them closing up, it's about getting rid of the virus and trying to, and the only way the virus spreads, it doesn't walk, people spread it. And so if we can all make sure that we're doing our social distancing, we're wearing our masks, we're washing our hands, you know, all of those great behaviors, we, that's how we can help our businesses, that's how we can help our schools. Because if we can stop that spread, then we can get back to getting the businesses open again.
I liked one of our local bar owners last week. He said he did a little independent study and he said that fun can be had before 10:00 PM. Everybody was having fun before 10:00 PM. He said, so just come out earlier, but we'll see what happens tomorrow. All right. Any other business? Mr. Grant?
I would just like to remind everyone that there's also funding for people affected by COVID for rent assistance and mortgage assistance. One of the programs that was through Anoka County, their deadline has already passed, but the, there is still a program that has plenty of money remaining in it through Minnesota Housing. And so people can either go to Minnesota Housing Finance Agency website, they can go to our city, our city website for more information, they can go to, or reach out to United Way, United Way is one of the partners. They can go to the Housing Link website or call Housing Link. There's a lot of organizations, a lot of partners that are helping to administer these funds. And again, it's for rent assistance or mortgage assistance, but the deadline is the end of December, so people should apply as soon as possible because there are steps that are involved. So they can't just expect to apply on December 31st and get through the, the process. So the sooner they apply, the better, but there's plenty of funds available, but it does take some time to get through the steps.
So what you're saying is that if somebody's got a COVID-related problem that's causing them difficulty in paying their rent or paying their mortgage, that there's some programs that are still available, but they have to look into it and get on it before the end of the year?
Absolutely. And the program is specifically for people that, it's for past due expenses. So it's not for people who, you know, they've been able to pay their rent or their mortgage so far and they think that they might have a problem paying December or January. It's for people who have already experienced a hardship and are behind two, three months or haven't paid last month, but it's all for past due expenses. And it's not just for the rent and it's not just for mortgage. It's also for helping them to pay homeowners association dues or utility costs or other things that are affect, are associated with housing. So it's not just the actual rent, it's not just the actual mortgage payment, but other related expenses as well. So, and even if they have received funding in the past, it does not preclude them from reapplying now if they've now since had other past due expenses as well.
Thanks for that clarity.
All right, thank you. Any other business to come before council? I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, whatever that looks like.
Move to adjourn? Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.